I'd like to call to order the February Public Hearing Meeting of Bryan City Schools Board of Education. If we could begin with a pledge to the flag.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Rob, would you please call the roll?
Emily Eball.
Here.
Cyndra Keeler.
Here.
Tom Lindby.
Here.
Brian Miller.
Here.
Glenn Newcomer. Thank you.
As part of the public hearing under new business, I'd like to ask for commentary from regarding Title I, Improving Teacher Quality; Title II-A, LEP; Title III, SPED Part B, IDEA; Chad Bassett, if you wouldn't mind giving us a few words.
So Title I, we received this for this current school year. Changes every year because it's a federal program. Obviously, money flows through the federal government. We receive about 380,000. Title I again is for improved academic achievement in reading and math. And money is a lot of times based on your socioeconomic status. For us, there's two categories for Title I. There's targeted assistance, where you actually target certain kids, and there's school-wide. Because of our socioeconomic status, we're considered school-wide, which allows us to help any individual, whether they qualify for the program or not. And this is at Washington and Lincoln. It's really elementary, elementary years. With that, we're able to fund about five and a quarter teachers through those funds in reading and math. We also, as part of that program, have to provide services to our non-publics. So St. Pat's and Final City Christian School also receive part of our Title I money. They get their equitable share based on their number of kids. Title II-A, preparing, training, recruiting high-quality teachers. We fund one teacher out of this. We use it as a class size reduction. This year, it's in grade three because we have a really large class in grade three. So every year, we look at that. We can use it, once again, in Washington and Lincoln and for class size reduction. That's around 65,000. Could use that on salary and fringes, fringe benefits for that. LEP Title III, since we have a limited number of English-language learners, where English isn't spoken in the home, we actually go through the ESC and have a consortium for that. It's not really a whole lot of money. We do pay some tutoring for a child out of that that doesn't speak English in their home and give them some extra tutoring through that. SPED Part B, IDEA, Assistant for All Children with Disabilities. This year, we received just short of 400,000 for that, 395,000. Once again, non-public is included in that. We actually give $12,000 good to our non-public to educate their children with disabilities based on their enrollment for that. Early Childhood, that's our preschool, ages three to five, helps with our child find, finding those kids that need to have developmental delays in our preschool. And that's about 14,000 a year on the early childhood program. Real quick overview.
Thanks, Chad.
Questions on those?
My name is Julie Matthews, and I am here to represent our Wellness Committee for Bryan City Schools. Bryan City Schools continues to partner with MBHP Infusion Fitness for our staff wellness program. BCS has also been hosting and will continue to offer in-house activities in this setting which promote overall wellness to all the staff. Each month, all BCS employees are encouraged to participate in what we have dubbed the Wellness Warrior Program. Employees who exercise for at least 30 minutes earn one point for that day and then record the monthly exercise total in our district wellness log. Those employees who complete the monthly bonus challenge get to log an additional five points each month. At the end of each month, the points totaled are reported to MBHP for the records. As in the years pass, employees who have participated in at least one month of Wellness Warrior Program will have a chance to win one of the many fantastic prizes that we have. At the end, they put their tickets in and they get to win. Healthy employees tend to be happy employees as well as have lower rates of absenteeism and incur fewer healthcare costs. By providing a wellness program, we are playing a small part in improving the personal well-being of BCS employees. And you'll find in your paper that it's broke down our grant, all that. MBHP secures a grant for this program. The monies are distributed amongst the participating schools and our insurance. The amount allocated to each school is based on the number of employees enrolled in the MBHP insurance plan. Closing, be committed. Wellness is a process. It takes time and commitment. Be enthusiastic. Enthusiasm is the greatest asset in the world. It beats money, power, and influence.
Thank you, Julie.
Thank you. Mr. Bassett again. Food service.
Food service. As far as nutritional updates, there really hasn't been too much new as far as food. They did up the fresh fruit requirement for breakfast. We now have to offer kids a full cup of fresh fruit every day. Oh, I should say fresh fruit. Of fruit every day, they have to take up to a half a cup, whether they choose to eat it or not. They have to take a half a cup. We offer, we offer a full cup. We are in the middle of uploading some documents to the state for food service. I think I mentioned a couple of meetings before. We are up for a three-year review of our food service process. They're going to be on site in May. It's a comprehensive review, down to sodium content for the week in our school lunches, all the way through our fiscal policies for our school lunches and breakfast program. I will tell you that probably one red flag we have right now is that maybe coming to you later and saying we're going to need to raise prices. I think because we do get reimbursed for a meal today, possibly are going to make us raise our lunch prices. Not that we want to do that. I can see that coming out of the audit when I look at some of those figures for that. But they do that every three years. This happens to be our year. It's a new process in the state this year, much more comprehensive.
Are they going to measure waste? Because I know that's been a problem, but are they going to measure waste?
They do not measure waste.
Because that's a huge cause. When the kids are throwing away foods that they don't like because they're required to offer certain types in certain amounts.
Correct. Now, we do implement, we had this offer versus serve.
Right.
Serve is you put on the tray.
Right, and they go, yeah.
You get. We do offer, but they have to have three components for it to be a meal.
Sure.
So if they don't like one of the components, they can do without, but they have to take three to make it a meal. And we do, we see some of that waste going. We have tried this year to implement some new things on our menus. Not always are they kid-friendly, but we are, again, we are kind of bound by law of things we have to have. We're trying new things and kind of polling the kids informally. What do you like, what don't you like, or some of the things they would recommend that we have, we can't do.
Let's work it out.
You know, surprising, this was surprising to me, is we tried meatloaf and the younger kids raved about it. I mean, I had kids telling me, you've got to keep that on. My own kids personally came home and said, you ever take that off the menu, we're going to be mad at you, Dad. Meatloaf! So that's worked really well. We found some things like burritos that kids like. High school kids like them. Elementary kids, not so much. So we're starting to split kind of our menus. Maybe the taste of the high school kids don't fit the elementary's. And we've always kind of had one bulk type A lunch. We're trying to split those a little bit, trying some things. But the meatloaf was the biggest, the biggest surprise to me. We did write a waiver to get rid of whole grain noodles. The state allowed us to do that this year for the whole grain spaghetti.
So still very trash.
We were throwing a lot of that away, and that's a popular meal. So we did write a waiver. Unfortunately, it's a one-year waiver. So next year, we'll probably back to whole grain, but at least for a year.
And I got to add, what's striking out? What does it work?
Well, a couple of different things. Like I said, I mentioned the burrito. The burrito did not work at the elementary. It just, I don't know, they didn't like it.
No.
We had to go away from chicken teriyaki because of the chicken shortages. That is a really popular meal. We replaced it with a Texas straw hat, which is a soft taco. Kids liked it, meets the requirements. Still the same thing. Kids get tired of chicken nuggets and chicken strips. We kind of see those early on as a good seller in this time of year. It's kind of going by the wayside. So I'd say that's kind of hit or miss.
Mm-hmm.
There.
Thanks.
Thank you. Anything else that we need to cover in this?
Nope. That concludes our public hearing.
That'll conclude the public hearing for this evening. Motion to adjourn.
I'll sign off.
Second. Rob? Okay. Let's see, let me get here. Cyndra.
Yes.
Tom.
Yes.
Brian.
Yes.
Glenn.
Yes.
Emily. Thanks.
All right. Now, I'd like to call to order a regularly scheduled board meeting, February board meeting for the Bryan City Schools Board of Education. I will, would that be dispensing with a pledge to the flag since we've just conducted that? However, if you would call the roll again for me, Rob.
Emily.
Here.
Cyndra.
Here.
Tom.
Here.
Brian Miller.
Here.
Glenn Newcomer.
Yes.
Thank you.
Everybody should have received and reviewed or had a chance to review the January organizational regularly scheduled board meeting minutes. Any questions, concerns? If not, I'll accept the motion.
Soon.
Tom? Second.
Second.
Glenn? Rob, if you would.
Cyndra.
Yes.
Tom.
Yes.
Brian.
Yes.
Glenn.
Yes.
Emily.
Yes.
Public participation. At this point, I'm not aware of any public participation, so moving on to communications. Cyndra, if you would give us a Fort County Career Center update.
I would be glad to. Today, as well as this Friday of this week, is Bring Your Parent to Lab Day. I think that would be rather fun. My son did a 10 forthcoming. I don't remember that, although I don't know if I would have gotten much out of the auto tech. But I might have went. I don't know. Also, this week is, starts the eighth grade, the eighth grade tours at Fort County. I don't know when Brian is attending, but I'm sure Mr. Rearing can give us an update on when our students might be heading there. And then there's, in the district, there's been many district and regional contests that have happened. I want to apologize upfront for students that I might miss. This is the list that I have currently, but I would like to congratulate many students that have competed, and this is the list of the state competition, students that are heading out. So for HOSA, which is Health Occupations Students of America, we have Emmy Darrow for Health Careers, Kristen Sealy, Health Careers, also, and Kendra Wheeler, Health Careers, as well as Timothy Gonzalez and Trey Lloyd, both Health Careers. So they're headed to state. Under Skills USA, we have Corey Robinson Upshaw for Visual Art and Design. Congratulations. And then under the BPA, which is Business Professionals of America, we have Michelle Dobson for Medical Office Technologies and Bryce Thorpe for Computer Networking and Repair. And we'd like to congratulate those students that have competed and are heading on. And I've been told there are more to come. There's some FFA and one other club that still have their competitions to wrap up from what I understand. Thank you.
Thanks, Cyndra, and congratulations to all the children for the success they've had and what they've been able to accomplish out at Fort County this year. Joe Beck. Joe is here to give us an update on transportation and with all the changes going on, the new schools. Part us a little bit about how busing is going to change next year, Joe. Thanks for coming.
Well, I appreciate the time. Put together a little PowerPoint. Nothing real spectacular, but just to kind of give you a visual of what we're looking at. Mrs. Savage was intangible in going through and kind of giving me some guidelines, kind of her vision. We sat down several different times and went over Plan A, B, and sometimes even C in areas. The administrative staff, they started asking, I think it was around September, they said, what are we going to look like next year? I said, I was going to look between Thanksgiving and Christmas. So they pushed a little bit to get some information so they were well aware. Lindsey Smith, after going through and speaking with her, she started going through and getting some of the routes together. I kind of gave her a visual of what we were looking at. This area here is over on the east side of town. That star is Lincoln, which is going to no longer be there, as well as you guys know. So the area inside the white, or that faded, was a walk zone. So students that lived in that area walked to Lincoln, and then we would transport to either Washington, the high school, or out here at the current middle school, to give you an idea of what we're looking at. So what we came up with, there's my blue. We are going to have roughly four routes. We're going to call them town routes currently, that is going to pick up in different areas. What you see there in the blue is one of the areas that we're looking at for a single bus. There are approximately 58 students in that area designated or identified right now that we can pick up. 58 passenger bus. We typically look at 65 to 84. However, that is figuring three students in a seat. Two people from probably the fifth grade up per seat is about what you want because it gets too tight. So one bus we're looking at in that blue area, that would be the direction. We went as far as to decide if the student was going to be on the door side of the bus or across the street. So we went into great detail on that. That would be one area, and there's a route.
Is it kind of house to house there?
We are looking at it more like the tarda bus.
It's stops.
Where there's going to be different stops. We're looking at about a two-block radius. One of the things we met with the, the city here, with the mayor, police, I think there was some council, and then some other people in there, and we discussed this or showed this exact thing to them. What we're looking at doing is possibly putting up signs, whether it be the blue line, the red line. We don't want to do necessarily a bus number, but say, here is your bus stop. And then we'll designate students for that. And that's all based off of kind of a grid. So that would be one. The next one would be just below that, between Mulberry and High. If you notice, I put two buses on there. One is going one direction, the other's going the opposite. That is so we can always put children on the door side. We don't want to have children across the street. I think nationally, we're starting to see more, more violators of the red lights. So we want to keep them as safe as we can and put them directly on that door side, pick up under, pick up and drop off. So 69 students in that area. The next one we're looking at is High Street, heading east, and then coming around on Wilson, and there's 58. The next area is a really large area. We're playing without those numbers right now as far as how to address that area, but that has 76 students. The nice thing about this, even though that's 76, some of them are young, so we can put three in a seat. But if we would put you and I in there, that's all we want realistically. So that's that area there. Those are the four areas that we're looking at to pick up the tarda bus-style type stops. Those three stars that you see would be stops that we would have on the main High Street. So being out there on that four-way highway, we tried to reduce that as much as humanly possible. But due to the logistics of those, those were three that we needed to keep. Any questions on any of that?
You could, I can show that map again, please, Joe.
Yeah, sorry.
That's all right.
Those four there?
Yeah, is that like Allen Street and then maybe like Toy Street?
One of them is just west of Toy Street, which would be that parking lot area. The, the gas station is there just east of there. That would be logistically a little bit better for students. However, because of that gas station being there, I don't want to stop really close to it because if you come out of that gas station, you're going to go around and you're not going to have enough time to see the red lights of the bus. The other one is just west of the tracks there on High Street, which would be west of Ohio Art. That was another location I couldn't.
On the north side?
South side. That one would be on the south side. And then that last one there on the right would be La Greta. That was also an area that was very difficult to.
And go ahead and turn around.
We would pick up right there on the, on High Street.
Everybody from the cold side would have to come out.
Yes. Yes. And we do that in other areas. If we can at all, we prefer not to back up a bus.
Right.
The worst place.
It's too tight to turn around in there.
It's very tight. Do we have some people that can do it? Probably under sleep, yes. But when you throw all the other factors, we don't want to back up a bus with children around.
Right.
10-foot rule is the most dangerous around a bus. But right now, that is the four areas that we're looking at. We're still looking at needing a shuttle bus, so to speak, from the six to 12 building over to Washington, as well as the new two to five with the old high school. So we're playing with those as well. It's an evolving.
Yeah, I know down in the southern part there, between Wilson and South, you would have maybe some more of the stops, not on Wilson or South, because those are pretty busy east-west streets, too.
Yeah. We currently have some on East-South Street. The advantage to the East-South Street is the speed limit, which is 25. No one goes 25.
Right.
But they do definitely stay at a lower speed.
And there's a subdivision, I know, south of South Street down there, too, that has some houses, I'm certain has some children.
We already pick those up.
Oh, you already picked those up?
We already pick those up.
These are the walkers. These are currently the walkers.
Yeah. But I didn't, I guess I didn't realize that we were out there already.
Actually, on East-South Street, just below the orange, we actually pick up on the south side.
Okay.
We currently do that. But this area was all designated walk area that we'll now kind of incorporate into what I'm calling town routes.
A chance you use like Roseland parking lot there?
We, actually, it was about two years ago, I came to Diana and asked about picking up in that Roseland Park area, kind of as a sample, trying to prepare to see how many students would, in that area, would be interested in busing. I think there's around eight that signed up originally for that, but typically, I'm looking at three to four that get picked up. So we did a test, so to speak, in that area.
Not wildly successful.
No, but for the ones that used it, it was a huge benefit for them. Like I say, right now, we're really, really close on our numbers. That glass screen when I went past, that was the routing program that we got several years ago. Lindsey and I are going through that, and we're assigning every student. What she's been doing, I did today, and she, she did it on Friday, where even if you need a shuttle from one building to another to catch your bus home, we're assigning those students. So we're keeping very, very close tabs on what bus everyone rides.
And this would probably remain the same even beyond next year, as far as that's concerned, as far as these, whatever sections you come up with, because it wouldn't be impacted that after next year, everything would just be on this campus out here. That would still be the same?
I would foresee that, yes. There may be some slight tweaking involved. We tweak every year, depending on students moving in, moving out, number of students going to school, or even students driving. So I'm projecting this is going to look very similar down the road. Once the other two facilities are no longer being utilized, then we'll probably have to do something similar to this on the west side, where we don't pick up currently. Any other questions for me?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Joe, do you have any other thoughts or concerns in regards to the drop-off coming
here as far as the single campus and anything you have to address at this time?
I don't think at this time. I actually discussed that the other day with Mrs. Savage. I had a question, and I think we're a little early at this point. I'm really excited about the, the parking lot that is for busing only. That's, that's a huge plus in my book because we're not contending with parents.
Lot safer.
Absolutely, absolutely. We don't have someone zipping up beside us and then in front to drop someone off. So that one now is probably the biggest asset that we see. As far as anything in the future, I'm not quite there yet. I need a little more details, and that will be, once we finish these rounds. But it's looking.
But clearly, the layout that we have designed for the, for the busing and everything, it's going to add to the safety.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Think about that.
Okay. Thank you. All right, thank you.
Thanks, Joe. Treasures report, Rob.
Hey, thank you. We'll start with our financial reports for the month ended January 31, 2016. Our cash reconciliation report, first of all, at Farmers Emergent State Bank, a balance of $12,050,088. Outstanding checks and adjustments, $167,254. Deposits at Star Ohio totaled $3,235,122. Deposits at Morgan Stanley, $32,578,122. And at State Bank, $4,017,64. Change funds and petty cash totaled $7,750. Total deposits at the end of the month, $51,714,591. Some of our fund balances at the end of January, the general fund balance was $10,435,291. Permanent Improvement Fund balance, $2,201,702. Our LFI fund for local construction money, $3,059,981. Our local fund for project construction, $28,153,889. And the state share of our project construction fund totaled $7,106,574. Once again, total balance, $51,714,591. Our SF2 report, where we review our budget versus actual, our revenues are $76,000 ahead of schedule, and our expenses are $172,000 under budget. Total positive variance at this point in time, $248,524. Any questions on those reports? Not? We'll look at appropriation modifications, our amended appropriations, total $25,743,138. Changes during the month, during, for district managed activities, an increase of $14,147. Permanent Improvement Fund increase of $3,003. Project Construction Fund, reduction of $2,771. Total modifications during the month, $13,756. Any questions regarding those modifications to our appropriations? Not? The next item is the resolution accepting tax rates from the County Budget Commission and County Auditor. Our inside millage is 4.4 mills. Our outside voted millage is 56.85 mills, for a total of 61.25 mills. That's a decrease of three-tenths of a mill from prior year. Our valuation for our district for this current year, tax year '15 payable in calendar year '16, is $261,641,940. That's an increase of about $11.4 million from previous year. This was a triennial update year, and we did see some valuation increase. Any question on those tax rates for tax year 2015?
It's good to say that that increase in valuation predominantly came from the agricultural.
That is correct.
Yeah. And residential values went down?
Residential stayed about the same. We saw a slight amount of growth due to new construction. Commercial industrial stayed flat. There is a slight increase in public utility.
You may not be able to answer, but roughly what percent increase on average did we gain in the agricultural, on the CAUV?
I think overall, it was around between 7 and 11 percent. I don't remember the number offhand. I can provide that to you next month. The next item on the agenda is our agreement with Northwest Ohio ESC for the 2016-2017 school year. The ESC provides our district several services, which we cannot maintain ourselves, or we can maintain more cost-effectively by hiring through them. So that agreement for next year is in the board agenda here for your passage tonight. That agreement, those services total $228,375. I'd like to recognize some donations for this month. Williams County Dairy Association donated $200 to our FCC LA program. The Bryan Elementary PTO donated $900 for character trade awards. The County Caukens Memorial through the First Church of Christ donated $25 to our Washington Elementary Library for library books. Mrs. Taylor's second-grade class donated a $10 Walmart gift card to the Bear Bag Program. First Federal Bank donated $30 to the Bear Bag Program. They also donated several canned goods to the Bear Bag Program. Family Video donated 20 hams to the Bear Bag Program. Academic Booster Club donated $540.28 to our Gifted Education Program. We had Skybrary. We had, uh, Skybrary Digital Application for iPads valued at twenty-nine hundred dollars donated by Benjamin and Rebecca Jackson to the Bryan Elementary Schools for use in grades kindergarten through five. And finally, the Wesley United Methodist Church donated, uh, eleven thousand four hundred and eight dollars to our district for classroom supplies for the upcoming school year. We wish to sincerely thank all these generous donors, uh, for supporting our school district.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Rob on Treasurers' Report? If not, I'm willing to accept the motion. Emily?
I'll second.
Syndra?
Tom?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Glenn?
Yes.
Emily?
Yes.
Syndra?
Yes.
And finally, we have, uh, one change order for you, for the construction project for your approval tonight. That change order is change order number sixteen with Rudolph Libby. The change order amount is forty-five thousand two hundred ninety-four dollars and thirty-four cents. There's several different items that make up this change order. Largest one being a rough-in for our interactive monitors in the classrooms. It totals thirty thousand eight hundred and seventy-six dollars. That was originally to be bid with our technology bid coming up. But due to the timing on getting the rough-in items, the boxes and stuff put in, that was moved up. So that the electricians could get this work done versus waiting. A couple other larger items on this, uh, change order, uh, some change work to the, uh, casework, plumbing and electrical in the, in the life skills classroom. That the increase was ten thousand five hundred one dollars. And adjustable backboards in the gym, um, that was an increase of seven thousand one hundred thirty-three dollars. There's some other smaller items in there that are somewhat immaterial.
So that thirty thousand dollar piece, which was the largest piece of this, though, is just something that would've come out of a later bid package?
It would've come out of the.
Push forward.
That's correct, Ryan. That's correct.
Any other questions? If not, I'll be willing to accept the motion on the, uh, change order.
So moved.
Glenn? Second? Anyone? Emily, thank you.
Ryan?
Yes.
Glenn?
Yes.
Emily?
Yes.
Syndra?
Yes.
Tom?
I'll understand.
Thank you. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thanks, Rob. Uh, old business, construction update. Diana?
Yes, so this was, uh, the latest from Rudolph Libby. This was received as of February twelfth. Um, our site utilities, including sanitary and storm sewers, water lines, electric and gas service are all complete. Our site grading is complete, except for the area immediately surrounding the building. All stone bases have been installed for the driving and parking areas. The asphalt paving for the drive on the east side, just north of the student parking lot to the existing school drive, was completed last fall. The seating of the north practice fields or the green space, um, pond area and all perimeter areas was completed in early fall. And you can see grass coming up, um, fairly well established. The building foundations are complete. The underslab plumbing and electrical is complete in all areas, except the student dining in a couple of the locker rooms. The bearing masonry is complete in all areas, except the east and west locker rooms, the corridor south of the gym and the gym entry. Structural steel is complete in those same areas. The roofing is complete on seventy-nine percent of the building. Sixty-one percent of the total one thousand, or one hundred thousand, one hu- I'm sorry, one hundred and four thousand square feet of the first floor concrete slabs have been poured. And one hundred percent of the second floor of the academic wing is complete. Metal studs are complete on both the first and second floor of the academic wing. Mechanical, electrical, and plumbing rough-in is approximately forty percent complete in the academic wing. Gypsum board installation, the drywall is complete approximately twenty-five percent of the academic area on the first and second floors. The interior masonry is about seventy-five percent complete, and the exterior brick is ten to fifteen percent complete. We do have an upcoming core meeting this Thursday, so we'll get a better picture of where we are. Um, and as we've discussed before, and somewhat related to our other old business item of the school calendar, we're really waiting to see where we are in March before we make any final determinations. Um, but I can tell you that it's been amazing progress over the past month. Um, and as of right now, we are still on time for that July twenty-sixth, um, completion date. Rob, anything that I missed that you'd like to share?
I was over today, and it's, um, the exterior brick work is coming along nicely in the courtyard on the west end of the gymnasium. That's, um, it's visible, eh, from a distance, but you can see what the brick is going to kind of look like. It's not been cleaned up, but, uh, it's really starting to take shape on the, uh, interior areas there of the courtyard to see what, what the brick is going to look like. So it's, it's, uh, nice to see that progress. The weather's helped us quite a bit, and, uh, I think they, uh, plan to, plan to continue on with the, the drywall and trying to get painters in and, um. First of March, so.
We have approximately a hundred and twenty workers on site every day.
That's a lot.
That's a lot of people. It's been a little over weeks since I've been through the, through the facility, but it is amazing. Uh, when you think of how many people are on site, every direction you go, you see people working. And, um, now that they have the studs up and the drywall is going up, it's really fun to, uh, or it's interesting to walk through and see the floor plan and the layout. And it's really gonna be, uh, nice to see how much space people, we're gonna be able to enjoy or in the facility. And it's, it's changing looks by the hour. It's, it's coming along, uh, much faster than I thought it was going to. I just hope it continues on through the rest of the project.
Tom?
Anything?
No, you pretty much touched on it all.
Any other questions from the board?
I know Rudolph Libby has said there, they believe they'll be on time, and they still think that from discussions that I've had with him, so. I appreciate the hard work and effort that everyone's put in, all the, all the people, those hundred and twenty people who are out there every day. Uh, Rob, Ned, I know has been out there quite a bit. Dana, I know you've had the opportunity to be out there quite a bit as well. So I really appreciate everyone's, uh, attention to this and making sure that we're on time and getting this done so that we can hopefully be ready to go when, on time when school starts next.
But just think of that, if you have a hundred and twenty people in nine hours a day that they're putting in, that's well over a thousand hours a day of labor being invested in that.
We have a couple local citizens that are working on the job. Kent Perk from Biohires, and, uh, Dan Peters works for Fetter's and the Masonry. And, uh, hats off to both of those individuals for, um, the work that they've done. And, um, they're taking a lot of pride in this job, so they're doing, they're doing a good job for us.
And then on the backside, we are starting, um, to ramp up discussions on the pre-catered five renovation as well. So we have, in the next few months, we'll be discussing the GMP or the Guaranteed Maximum Price and getting the bids ready to put out for that building as well. So, that work is starting to, um, really get engaged as well.
Any other questions? Any discussion on calendar, any further discussions at this point on the calendar, school calendar for next year? I know we're waiting to kind of hear back over the next month from, from Rudolph Libby and how things are going there.
Correct. We wanted to leave it on, um, just to, again, remind the staff and the public that we are still waiting to get a more definitive answer from the construction before approving the calendar.
Thank you. Uh, no other, with there being no other new, uh, old business, uh, no really items addressed under new business. So, if, move forward to the superintendent's recommendations. Diana?
Okay, thank you. Uh, we have, as you'll soon hear with Eric's report, some exciting news for our high school bowling and high school swim teams. So I'd like the board to approve overnight stays for them for their upcoming state tournaments. And those, um, the paperwork for those trips are listed in your packet. Um, each year, last year, we authorized the superintendent to enter into collective and individual agreements with Ohio Colleges and Universities on behalf of the Board of Education for terms related to the College Credit Plus Program. This authorization is being renewed and will remain in effect until withdrawn by formal action of the board. Um, as a reminder to all, uh, students, the College Credit Plus Program is kind of a merging of the dual enrollment and the post-secondary options. It's open to our students in grades seven through twelve. There is a mandatory parent meeting, which is upcoming this month. And for more information on our College Credit Plus Program, please take a look at our school website and our social media sites. And we have the information there. And that are all my, that is all of my recommendations for this month.
Any questions on those items? If not, I'll accept the motion.
So moved.
Tom? Second?
Second.
Emily?
Glenn?
Yes.
Emily?
Syndra?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Thank you.
Under commendations for high school and middle school, we have our second quarter All-A Honor Roll students listed. Our students of action, our character trait this month was honesty. With our Kiwanis Students of the Month, our OMEA District One Honors Choir participants. Our District One Honors Orchestra participants. Our District One Honors Band participants. We also have our Fort Wayne Museum of Art Scholastic Art winners. Gold Key winners this year, Kennedy Dick, Tyler Jones, Dylan Lehman, Skylar Nagel, David Rumel, Claire Hurt, Caitlin Mock, Kim Roberts, and Riley Schultz. And our Silver Key winners, Paige Anderson, Tyler Jones, and Kennedy Dick. Um, middle school, again, our second quarter All-A Honor Roll, as we mentioned earlier. Our character traits, awards, Ike's Top Dogs for honesty for grades four and five. And our students of action for honesty at grades six, seven, and eight. We have our District One Honors Band for middle school students, Lucas Will. Our District One Honors Orchestra students, as well as our District One Honors Choir students listed. So, a tremendous amount of success in our arts this month to honor. And then for Lincoln Elementary School and Washington Elementary School, we recognize our character straight student commendations for honesty. As well as our PE Gold Slip winners, Connor Fisher, Chloe Davis, and Meredith Miller. And those are our student commendations for this month.
Also move to accepted commendations?
Thank you, Syndra.
Nope, sorry. I'll second it.
Emily? Syndra?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Glenn?
Yes.
Under personnel, we do have some resignations that we re- accept with regret for purposes of retirement. Judy Elser has been with us for close to or just over thirty years as central kitchen manager. Her retirement will be effective May thirty-first. And Pat Gackel, who's been the cubter garden aide for as long as I've been here, um, that retirement will be effective May thirty-first as well. So we wish them both the best in their retirement plans. Resignations, Lyndon Spees is junior high co-cross-country coach, effective January seventh. Catherine Gabriel is high school Spanish and social studies teacher, mentor teacher, and foreign language club advisor, effective June thirtieth. Catherine is moving on to go back to get her doctorate, so she's looking at teaching at the college level. Tiffany McBride is lunch duty, classroom bus duty aide, effective March fourth. Tiffany has an opportunity to gain full-time employment with, um, a county agency in defiance. So we wish her the best with her new position. We'd like to extend a one-year limited teaching contract for next school year to Lisa Heslop. A seven to twelve Spanish teacher. She has her master's, ten years experience. She comes to us from Eden. We'll place her on the A-one salary schedule. This week, we're hosting boys sectional tournament games for basketball. Last week was the girls sectional. We'd like to approve the following non-employee tournament workers for OHSAA. Claire Valmer, Mason Zuck, Justin Garza, Stan Nyheart, Tracy Williamson, Sam Yo, Tony Plotz, and Robert Replay. And then we have our spring supplemental contracts listed. Laura Knight is assistant musical director, Jeff Inselman, head baseball coach. Ryan Miller, Tanner Valmer, and Tyler Bernath is assistant high school baseball coaches. Rich Will is head track coach, Tom Goodrich, Jacob Will, Scott Green is his assistants, along with Chelsea Miller. Beth Klingeman is co-head softball coach, Shane Smith, Betsy Slasher, um, is assistants. Mitchell Owens is head boys tennis, and Nathan Keel is his assistant. And middle school track coaches, Ben Osterland, Josh Montgomery, and Brian Cummins. Along with Dan Slagle volunteering for the athletic department. And you have substitute teachers listed for both certified and classified.
Just as a point of information, I am not the Ryan Miller that is the assistant high school baseball coach.
Thank you for that clarification.
Any questions on those? If not, I'm willing to accept the motion.
So moved.
Tom?
Thank you.
Second?
Second.
Glenn?
Syndra?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Glenn?
Yes.
Emily? Thank you.
Rob, if you would.
Yes, and, uh, finally, uh, supplemental contract for Chad Savage, co-head softball coach.
Thank you, Rob. Uh, again, willing to accept the motion if no questions.
So moved.
Glenn?
I'll second.
Syndra?
Tom?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Glenn?
Yes.
Emily?
Yes.
Syndra?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Under legislative finance update, just, uh, sent a release to board members that I just received this evening that the next round of state report card information will be coming out this week. There is a webinar being hosted for schools prior to the release. Um, I'm happy to say, I also just received this news that it looks like, um, and Chad, I haven't had a chance to share this with you, but our appeal for some of our testing scores went through and was accepted and did change our overall, um, report card for the standards to an A. So, it moved us up a level, so we're very excited about that. Um, there were a few standards that we missed, but they were by one or two students in total. I mean, the percentages were less than five percent combined, um, is how very, very close. So, congratulations to all of the students, to the parents, to the staff. What an amazing job, and we'll see, as I tell the administrators, it's, it's really critical to look at your scores in a vacuum and to see where you stand and look for areas where you need to improve. But we'll see once we have a chance to compare across the county and across the four county area, to see where we actually ended up. But I'm just very excited with how our scores are coming through, especially in a year where, remember, it was a brand-new test. And there were some real big hiccups with giving the test on computers for the first time. So just really, really proud of, of how our kids have performed. And in that, I'm gonna then lead into the administrators' reports. So we're gonna hear more good things about our students, starting with Mr. Ruffer.
Hello, uh, I've got some updates. We're kinda in a transition mode, uh, here for athletics. Um, as Mrs. Savage mentioned earlier, we've got, uh, a few people participating in state tournaments, uh, this weekend. Uh, we've got swim, Ashley Franks is gone as an individual in two different events. And she'll also compete on a relay along with Hannah Nguyen. Uh, we got a private father back here, Elizabeth Whoer is going down, and then, uh, who's the last one? Izzy Ray. Uh, they will compete this weekend. Uh, I believe it's Thursday, Friday, Saturday, they're going down. Um, then also, we had a state bowler who will compete on Saturday down in Columbus, uh, Jordan Easley. Um, got in there, uh, last weekend, and she'll compete on, on Saturday. Uh, some things, kinda wrapping up, uh, girls' basketball, finished with a seven to sixteen record. Um, I think if you talk to Coach Gross, he, he expects more and more, uh, out of them as we go along. Pretty young team, a lot of freshmen that they've been playing, so future's bright for them. Um, they've got some holes to fill with graduation, but, um, looking forward to what they can do over the summer and then offseason. Um, wrestling, finished their season this past weekend. Um, didn't have anybody advance on, into this, into the second round of, of, uh, wrestling tournament, uh, so they finished up last weekend. Uh, bowling, talked about that a little bit, and talked about swim. Um, good one we had for boys' basketball, this last Friday, we had our last varsity game in the, in the old gym, if you will. Um, had a really good turnout, really good game, if you happen to be there. Um, it's always good to beat Archibald. Um, and, and it was an enjoyable way to kinda finish, wrap that thing up. We do have some more contests going on in there. We're playing on, still playing some, uh, junior high games in there next year and things like that, utilizing that space while we can. Uh, boys, they play tomorrow night, uh, in their first round of the tournament against Van Borden Donalama Senior. Then the transition part, I just went out to softball and baseball. They had their first practices today. Um, got a quick look at them, uh, believe it or not, they're starting up. And, and in a couple weeks, track and, um, boys tennis will start up, so. Kinda transitioning, kinda finishing up with a few things, and. So kind of transitioning, kind of finishing up with a few things, and then moving on, looking ahead. There's no questions, that's about all I have.
Thank you. Chad?
I just wanted to bring to your attention one item that's kind of a collaboration between food service and our sixth graders right now. Kind of the theme of the night earlier was nutrition. Right now, our sixth graders are studying a unit on nutrition, and I'm actually gonna go in their classrooms and present to them on nutrition requirements for school lunches. They're gonna be asked in a group setting to build a school lunch for a day, and we're going to kind of pick a winner and try to pull that off in the cafeteria so the sixth graders can go through the line and actually see their meal presented to them, knowing all of the nutritional facts that we have to adhere to. So I think it's a neat project for them. Some of them already sit in the hallway and have asked about ideas for school lunch, and it's kind of neat to see their excitement of feeling involved in something outside of just nutrition study.
Excellent, thank you.
Being the parent of a sixth grader, make sure my son understands that pizza, spaghetti, and french fries is not a good school lunch.
We're gonna hit that in the presentations.
Mr. Ward?
Well, on that sixth grade note, which is, this is not in my notes, sixth grade is also taking on a PBL in regards to field day. In years past, fifth and sixth grade had their field day together, and fourth grade had their separate. Well, this year, we're having fourth and fifth together, and sixth are the ones that's gonna be all the planning for the fourth and fifth graders this year. So they're actually gonna run field day, which is kind of exciting. So on your note, it sounds like sixth grade's really busy this year, so looking forward to that. We had a successful Lincoln Day a couple weeks ago, well-attended both mornings. We had second day, second grade on one day, third on the next. We didn't have any snow from last year. We had two cancellations. I allowed a lot of extra donuts, but this year it went really, really well. To plan for next year, we've been having preschool transition meetings. As we look at our preschoolers, if they're gonna transition to kindergarten or stay in preschool for another year, so we've already started that process now initially with parents, we're meeting with parents now, going through that process. You heard about some donations with bear bags, and so just kind of give you update on that. I know I don't do that very often, but we have a great crew of staff that every week is packing those bags. At our level, pre-K to five, I can't speak for the sixth through eight, I don't have those numbers, but we're roughly serving twelve to twenty families every week with a bag. And typically, that, when I look at the data, it's a family of four or more. So again, we're doing a good service, and as you can see, we have a lot of people within the community that donate, even our staff. Mr., I wanna say Tippin, but it's not Tippin, Mr. Grossjean will send out an email to staff, say, hey, we're low on this, this, and this. When you're head of the grocery store, bring it in the next day, and sure enough, there's always bags of groceries there from our staff. So just giving you update on that, it's a great thing for our community. A kindergarten parent meeting is coming up March tenth, that's at seven o'clock at Washington. So again, if you have a child that's gonna turn five by September thirtieth, make sure you get your child to, or get yourself to that meeting on March tenth. And then the kindergarten screening is on April fourteenth and fifteenth, and that again is at New Hope. The last thing is something that Mr. Wright Teicher actually started when he was here, and then Mrs. Taylor took it on, and now it's kind of following in my lap, and that is Step Up to Quality with our preschool. Step Up to Quality, again, is just another system of checks and balances. It's a certificate that we can get. There's five-star process, so there's like a three-star, a four-star, and a five-star. And it's where they come in, and the state's actually looking at all kinds of information as far as our benefits and our wages, retirement, looking at goals for all of our preschool students, like whether you're a special ed kid or a reg ed kid, a typical, they all have goals. So we're working hand-in-hand with the ESC, with Steve Hastings, who we've been working with all year, we partnered all year with. So we really start that process now, we start uploading information March first. We have to have that done by March the twelfth. So the good thing is, is we are one of nineteen schools in our area that their number got called. So there's nineteen other districts within our area that are all putting binders together so that way we can upload that information. So it is our goal, when you look at it, you're looking at hours for your paras, for professional development, and your teachers, we're reaching for a five-star, but we may not be at a five-star based upon where our PD has been for our paraprofessionals or teachers. We're not certain yet what that's gonna end up, if we're gonna be a four or a five, but we're still shooting for a five-star. So that's a big project right now going on at the preschool, so we'll keep you updated as far as more information on that.
All right, thank you. Mr. Larry?
Good evening. Follow-up on the bear bags, our middle school students are actually hosting the dance March third. We know there's gonna be a good turnout to a junior high dance. So they're actually gonna, to enter the dance, gonna be bringing canned goods for their entry fee. So it's either a two-dollar donation or more goods towards the bear bag program, so we just need to keep it thriving. Dates going out at six to twelve, our upcoming dates here at the six-to-twelve level. Wednesday, if you are interested in donating blood, we're hosting our Bloodmobile. Again, that's two days from now. So if you're interested, you can contact Jackie Elser, our science teacher, and she will get you a time slot to come in and donate for that. We have a lot of orchestra, band, and choir concerts being held this month. Orchestra just had theirs this past Sunday. Coming up this Sunday, we have our band, and then two Sundays from now is our choir concerts. So come out to the Arts and Ed and attend those for a two o'clock start timeout there. We're, for the first time, holding an event this coming Wednesday, so a week, over a little over a week from now, called CEO Wednesday. And what it is, is it's an event for our seniors to get them some interview skills and prep them for the real world, moving outside of our doors and into the real world. So we have, right now, twenty local business leaders who have volunteered their time and are going to put all of our seventy-five seniors in the building through an interview process, through a mock interview. And then we've, we're gonna turn it into a friendly competition from there. So once they've all gotten their first interview, they're gonna get some feedback from the local representative that they're interviewing with. And then the top twenty-five are gonna move on to round two, and they're gonna go through a little more rigorous interview. And then from there, the top twelve are gonna move on to round three and go through a little more rigorous interview, this time in front of a panel of our local business leaders. And then we're gonna select our top five interviewees out of this process to have a CEO luncheon, if you will, for lunch with them at Jackie Blue's. So that's coming up next Wednesday, March second. We're really looking forward to our seniors getting that interview experience. The timing for this is great for them. In two weeks, they have their Bryan Area Foundation Scholarship interview, so it's a little practice for those real McCoy interviews and also to get them that experience moving into the real world. So we're really looking forward to that, and thank you to all those who are able to volunteer their times. I know it's tough to pull off during the work day, so. Our state qualifiers, we're doing a send-off Wednesday morning for them. So we're gonna have the band play, and we're gonna call all the students down to the first floor of the high school hallway and send them out in style and wish them luck. So if you are a parent or community member and want to come out and support that, you are more than welcome to come to the high school at eight o'clock Wednesday morning. And the new building horizons, our student scheduling is getting completed. Our guidance staff has now had the ability to input all of the course requests for students, and we're looking forward to the next step now, and that is actually building the master schedule for the first time with grades six to twelve all coming together. So they're gonna be going out to Archibald and Hawke in March to start that process, and it will take a good two to four weeks, and if not longer, to build that and get us internally set for moving into that building, so we're excited for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for the administrators?
Ryan, we do have a few board meeting dates upcoming. I apologize, I skipped right over that. March twenty-first will be our next board meeting here at seven o'clock. Our LPDC meeting will be announced, and our Business Advisory Committee, you know what? I keep missing to change that. That is, I'm gonna get it for you. March sixteenth is the next Business Advisory Council meeting. That'll be at seven a.m. here in the Fieldhouse Conference Room.
At this time, we do have a need to go into executive session for three different causes underneath. The purposes allowed, item A, appointment, employment, dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion, or compensation of an employee or the investigation of charges or complaints against an employee, official, licensee, or student. Item B, the purchase of property or public purposes or the sale of property at competitive bidding. And under item D, preparing for, conducting, or reviewing negotiations or bargaining sessions with employees. At this time, I don't see any further action, but I am willing to accept the motion to enter into executive session.
So moved.
Tom? Emily is the second.
Ryan?
Yes.
Glenn?
Yes.
Emily?
Yes.
Syndra?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Thank you.